It is six o'clock. I will call the October 24th, 2023 meeting of the Withfield County Board of Supervisors to order. We do have a call this evening with Ms. Lawson is absent and Mr. Burnett or Burnett wants to call in per our rules and procedure unless I hear objection, he will be automatically permitted. All right. Mr. Burnett, can you hear us?
Yeah.
All right. If you would, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and or before the Pledge of Allegiance, we have Pastor Greg Kaler of the All Nations Church of God to provide the invocation. You'll come on up Pastor.
Sure. Let's all just pray together. Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, that no matter what place and life we occupy, that you're always there to help. And Lord, your word tells us in Proverbs, Chapter three, to trust in the Lord with all of your heart. Lean not upon your own understanding. In all of your ways acknowledge him and he will direct your path. So Father, tonight, we pray for direction for these men and women as they discuss business for the county. Pray for your wisdom, your knowledge, insight, and inspiration. Help them, Lord, to do that which is good for the people of the county and that which is right in your sight. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. As always, our first item on our agenda is Citizens Time. I'll call you up and you will have three minutes. And the first person we have signed up is Mr. Larry Scott. Mr. Scott?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate you being able to come up here tonight. I was in front of this board back in June and I brought up a couple of issues and since that time, nothing has been done. It was about a rundown house trailer over in Austinville next to my property. Would anybody like to see these photos?
You can give them to Mr. Bear, Mr. Scott.
Like I said, so nothing has been done on that. There was a couple of people that I talked to when I was in up here in front of this board last time, and that was Mr. Burnett. I showed Mr. Burnett the pictures, the photographs. I gave him a card where he could give me a call. I have heard absolutely nothing. That's been back in June, I believe. Also, at that last meeting, I talked about the monument over in Austinville that had been damaged. And the word was, this gentleman here was going to look into it. I called his office three or four or five times, left my name, left my number. I've heard nothing. So I'm still concerned about that. That rundown trailer over there is next to a house that I bought five years ago. If you will see the photos, you'll see it's very close to a church and then you can see it's close to the house that I purchased. There's no one lives in that trailer except wild animals, skunks, raccoons, snakes, and that sort of thing. It's a total 100% I saw. I know that nobody on this board would want to live next to that trailer. So that's the reason I'm up here tonight. That is the very reason I'm here. And to be very honest with you, I'm perturbed. The reason I'm perturbed is because I make these phone calls and I hear nothing back. Nothing. And as far as I know, the monument over there is still damaged. So we're talking about three months here and it's not getting done. When something like that happens, in my opinion, somebody's not doing their job. And, you know, I'm just one citizen, but you take care of all citizens. And, you know, I need some help on that. You would not want that trailer that's run down and the shape that it in, you would not want that next to your house. So why do I have to live with it? What can I get from this board to take care of that? Now, again, you know, we're talking about 90 days and I haven't heard anything. Now, do I need to be sort of upset? I think so. Any questions for me?
Mr. Bear, did we look at that?
Yes, I have looked at it, but when I went to the Northern Region Water Authority meeting after he brought up the issue, the property is mowed, the property is maintained. There are the pictures you previously showed, showed there's not electric to the house.
No, I'm not.
Did not bring anything that was any that seemed to be any violation of the property maintenance.
Maintenance order.
I also reviewed it, as did the building inspector and concur with Mr. Bear's assessment.
The building inspector did look at that?
He did. Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. That absolutely 100% shocks me. That shocks me that that could happen. There's got to be an ordinance against something like that. By the way, Mr. Bear, that graze is not mowed now. I'm not talking about the graze. I'm talking about the structure. And you have the photos. Would you want that house next to you?
Mr. Scott, we and I'm honestly, it's frustrating for us sometimes and I'm definitely not making excuses. We're one of the few counties in Virginia that we don't have zoning.
Maybe that changes, sir.
Well, let me finish, sir. I gave you your chance to speak, just, you know, and that's something that due to complaints such as you brought up, solar farm issues, that is something that that we are looking at. I understand your frustrating frustration. Unfortunately, a lot of times with situations like this, our hands are tied by the Code of Virginia as to what we can do without zoning.
So basically, what you're telling me is I'm going to have to live with it?
Until we make some type of movement on property management slash zoning legally, it meets our property maintenance ordinance.
I understand. I would like to say one more thing. I was born and raised here. I went off into the military. I was gone for 31 years and moved back here about 25 years ago. I love living here in a county. I've got a great place on the river in Austinville. And I pay my taxes like everybody else. And, Mr. Bear, I'm shocked. I am shocked that you sort of blow that off the way you do. I am stunned. I mean, that's, I'll tell you what. There needs to be some changes. We have to live with something like that. I mean, I hope you understand the frustration. I cannot build a privacy fence high enough to hide it. It's there. It's a total 100%. I swear, no one would ever live in it again. And yeah, if you've got the photos, I might as well get them back. Because what you're telling me now is you can't do anything for me.
Until we make some type of movement, and I would encourage you to reach out to Mr. Burnett when we have that discussion.
Well, I've talked to Mr. Burnett about it a couple of times and he has all the information. He has my phone number. He has nothing. And I have not received anything at all. That tells me there probably needs to be a change. So I might as well take the photos and go them back home.
Mr. Burnett, I'll be glad to, Mr. Scott, I'll be glad to take your photos and scan them in and say the full board has them and then we'll get them back to you. Your complaint has not been blown off. Your complaint was reviewed, sir.
I know. And you tell me there's nothing. You just sat there and told me that when you saw it, it looked okay. That's not true.
Mr. Scott, what he said.
But that's not true.
Mr. Scott, what he said was, it meets our ordinance that we have in place now, which is probably the most stringent ordinance we can have without some type of zoning ordinance.
We've got a lot of kids that play around there and I hope somebody don't get hurt because I brought it up here twice.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
I'll leave again.
And Mr. Hankins, can we get a follow-up on the monument?
Yes, sir, if you don't mind. I'll give you what I've got now. Mr. Scott, I think you were here in May because I reviewed it May 31st. That's when my picture is timestamped. The issue is with the defacement on the With the marker for Withfield County on the Virginia monument. I don't know if there was a star or, you know, what there was marking Withfield County there. My understanding is that monument is on the State Park's property. So I have sent that on to the State Park staff, you know, to see if there's something that they can do. I don't think that's under air control unless I've missed something somewhere. So, you know, I think we've done what we can do there in asking them to do that. I think it's a fairly simple fix. I think you could apply a brass star in epoxy on there and probably dress it up and make it look nice. But if it's not ours, we can't fix it.
Well, Austinville's where I live and I like things to be right. And I have one little question for you, sir.
Austinville's where I live too, sir. So I like for things to be right as well.
You go past it every day.
I do.
But why didn't you notify? Why didn't you call me?
Because I don't have an answer for you. You know, if the state hasn't let me know.
Didn't you call and tell me that within three months?
Well, Mr. Hankins.
I've been busy.
Mr. Hankins, will you follow up and with the state and let's see if we can't urge them along?
I will.
All right. That's all the citizens. We have signed up for Citizens Time. So I'll close Citizens Time. Our next item on the agenda, we have a public hearing about the coordinated fire and rescue system ordinance. And, Mr. Bear, I will let you read that as I try to find it.
Withfield County Board of Supervisors is considering adopting an ordinance establishing a coordinated fire and rescue system. Public notice is hereby given that the board will receive public input at 6:00 PM Tuesday, October 24th, 2023, or soon thereafter. It's practical in the boardroom at the County Administration Building, 340 South Sixth Street, Withfield, Virginia, 24382. All interested parties are invited to attend the meeting to express their views concerning the ordinance. In summary, the ordinance would create a unified response system for emergencies and enhance the structure of emergency medical service and enable faster emergency response and coordination of county resources. The board may choose to amend and enact the ordinance after the public hearing. A copy of the draft ordinance is available for inspection at the County Administrator's Office, 340 South Sixth Street in Withfield, or online at www Withco.org. Any member of the public may submit comments in person or in writing. Mail comments to Martha G. Collins, Withfield County Clerk, 340 South Sixth Street, Withfield, Virginia, 24382, or by email to mgcollins@withco.org. Any persons needing accommodation to speak should call the County Administrator's Office prior to the public hearing at 276-223-4500, by order of the Withfield County Board of Supervisors.
All right. And I assume we didn't have anybody to speak, Ms. Collins. Did we receive any written comments? Mr. Hankins, do you want to proffer this?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We've been working on this draft ordinance for a while. Scott and his staff have been very helpful in helping to find other counties that have ordinances that we want to model. And so we present you one that we have tailored to Withfield, but is modeled on some other localities that have done fire and EMS particularly well. So this would provide a coordinated countywide system of fire, rescue, emergency management, disaster planning, and related services. It would also move emergency medical services providers to being county employees to provide benefits, training, retention, retirement benefits for them, hopefully enhancing our EMS response. That was one thing that's very difficult for us to do or for the independent rescue squads to do is to provide benefits and to retain people. So making them county employees, as we've discussed several times over the last two years, this would hopefully provide some incentives to stay longer and provide the essential medical services that were mandated by the state to provide. This was first recommended by the Fire and Rescue Study in 2007. We've also had some changes in state requirements since then. The state language has always, since it was written, the state language has been that we had to provide emergency medical services. In the last General Assembly, they have changed that to essential emergency medical services, which means a higher level of service for us to provide. As you know, we've had a lot happen in economic development that drives our emergency response and the need for fire and EMS personnel, the interstates, the rail, and all the hazardous materials that go through here on a regular basis. Those dictate that we ought to have a higher level of response. One of the things that we can use to provide that is the tax revenue that comes from Casino Bristol. It gets split 14 ways between the localities of the Bristol Transportation District. So that has to be spent on public safety, education, or transportation. And you all, as part of the budget process, have decided to use that toward public safety. We also need a more coordinated effort to recruit volunteers to support the volunteer fire system as long as we possibly can. We really rely on our volunteers. They do a great job now. But, you know, society's changing and it's getting harder and harder to find volunteers. We want to be able to find a way that we can facilitate bringing those folks on board and getting them trained and working in our community. We need also overall better cooperation, joint operations, training, apparatus, planning, purchasing. There's a lot of things that we can do as a coordinated system. So this just gives everyone who's involved now, all the fire and rescue, excuse me, all the fire agencies will get a seat at the table. The rescue agencies will become a part of the coordinated system. The rescue squad boards will go away. They will not be needed any longer. As part of our planning for this, we had talked about trying to keep those boards to help with going out and getting grant funding. But the grant funding has to be made to the primary EMS agency in serving that area. Since we'll be a countywide agency serving the east end, west end, outside of Withfield's service territory, there's not a need to keep those additional rescue squad boards. It does preserve the independence of the volunteer fire organizations and their members. It will keep the 501(c)(3)'s that serve fire organizations so that they continue to do fundraising in support of public safety operations here. It will help us provide better emergency medical services all the way around and we can even expand it. The agencies that want to provide, say, EMTR services, your very basic emergency medical response, say for a lift assist or for, you know, putting on bandages, that sort of thing. We could do that with firefighters on trucks instead of having to roll an ambulance out every time. So there are some benefits that come from this. It's an 11-page ordinance that puts together a lot of things, a lot of concepts. The important thing to, or the important takeaways are, we want to make sure that we're providing the most essential emergency services to our citizens, that we can respond to disasters and emergencies in the most timely way possible, that we have some countywide coordination, and some responsibility and accountability for the agencies that you're funding through the budget process. The county's not taking over fire departments. We are giving the chiefs better liability protections, but we're also stepping up some of our expectations on accountability as well. So if we need to temporarily reassign a truck from one department to another, if a busier department has a breakdown, we could temporarily reassign a unit. You know, we could do some things now that we don't do. It does require, as part of this, and this is a key change, that you approve the fire chiefs every year. There's a liability to being a fire chief. And if you, as a board, don't approve those fire chiefs every year, they don't necessarily have all the liability protections that they could have through the county. So that's a key feature for the chiefs as well. It does ask if they give us some more accountability of the fundraising that they do. You know, one of the chiefs suggested, based on the work that he's done with other counties, that we include here, we have a requirement that they will provide us with a copy of their books, if there's a concern about the use of those donated funds. You know, I think that's a wise thing to do because it provides protections for those departments and for the county in the expenditure of public funds as well as the intake and expenditure of funds by charitable organizations. So the key features, the only written comment that I've received came from the town of Withfield and we have reviewed them on the staff level and think that they're probably the only one that ought to be, one suggestion they made that ought to be included, and that's Section 1.4 of the draft ordinance. They say that we didn't include enabling legislation for assigning rescue squads and setting up rescue squads as part of the ordinance. So I would ask that, as you consider this, that you amend Section 1.4 to after the term 27-6.1, add and 32.1-111.14 before the words amended. That drops in that state. Enabling language and should cover us if a question arise. This does not change the emergency services agreement between the county and Withfield. It does not take over the Withfield operations on the fire or rescue side. They would still serve the same territory that you had carved out and set aside for them. The only way that they would come under the county's operational employees if there was a significant disaster, and that would be dictated by the National Incident Management System, the NIMs system, and by NFPA policy for fire ground operations. So you don't see a lot of references in here to Withfield other than them being a part of the overall operation because they need to have a seat at the table. This does provide mechanisms for us to, if we have departments that aren't operating the way that they should, that are operating unsafely or outside of your expectations, that we do have a way that the commission that's set up to oversee this can correct, discipline those departments that do need to change their procedures. And you know, there are, everyone has different perspectives. So having this commission will give us, you know, a diverse set of opinions and views so that we can make sure that we're all operating safely and effectively. That's my summary. It's about as quick as I can make it. It is a long document. I'm glad to answer any questions that you might have. A copy of this summary is in the back of the room for the folks here who need to see it. But that's the only amendment that I would request as part of this as well. And I'll give that to Martha and Ray.
All right. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Hankins or any comments on the proposed ordinance?
So, Mr. Hankins, a couple of things. First of all, thank you for your work and everybody else that put in for it. I know there's some gentlemen that's here and that had some input on it as well and a lot that's not here. The only question is just a clarification for me. I know you talked about the rescue boards going away. So their 501(c)(3)'s is gone. It's 501(c)(3)'s only for the fire departments here.
They don't have to go away, but they wouldn't have any operational control over their departments. If they want to maintain those rescue squad boards as a charitable organization, as long as legally they can do so, they could continue to operate and raise funds in support of the operations of their squads, but they wouldn't have any operational control over the personnel or the apparatus or any of the equipment that they might have issued with.
All right. Thanks, sir.
So just to clarify, for lack of better verbiage, it would become almost like a booster club for that agency.
A support organization, yes, sir. That's the right way to look at it.
Does anybody else have anything?
You're done, Jim?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay. I thought you had more than one. I had one. Someone brought it up and then I've read it and I've kind of got a quote. I don't know. Not a real problem with it, but in Section 1-6d, it talks about that the Emergency Services Commission Director can exercise authority over the emergency operation when deemed necessary for the safety and welfare of the public. I don't think we would have a problem now with who I think our director, I presume this is, that he will be our director.
I am your acting director.
Oh, you are. Okay.
I have a job description prepared to advertise that and take that off my plate.
But in the past, I have had some, we've had some people over fire and EMS that I think if they showed up at a scene, they would take instant command automatically. And I think that could cause problems. So, I mean, do we have a safeguard in there to keep them from doing that? I mean, I know it says their public safety, but...
I'm your safeguard.
Okay.
You know, they still report to me. If it's not me, they'll still be under the county administrator. So that's not what we want. We don't want them to show up on a random fire scene and saying, hey, I'm in charge.
Right.
If it's a large-scale emergency, something that makes sense to have a county coordinated response, that's when that person would step in and take command of the scene. But it might not be command of the scene. They might be in the EOC running operations from there or coordinating with me or Stephen if we're working in the EOC. So it's certainly not the intent for them to be able just to roll up and say that they want to do that. But if they come up on a scene and they see that a commander is making a decision that will endanger life
Right.
or property, you know, that's when they at least ought to have a conversation with that commander and say, is this really what you want to do? And if they're going to go ahead with something that's going to get firefighters killed or get members of the public harmed, then I would expect them to step in. And, you know, that's one of the reasons why it enables this is so that they can be a safeguard for those folks who are on the scene. And your scene commander might not necessarily be the chief.
Right.
You're a fire service, you know. It might be your, if your first lieutenant is your senior officer on the scene, it might be your first lieutenant.
Right.
Those folks might not be as experienced or may not, you know, be the ones to make that decision right away.
I just don't want it to cause problems, you know, down the road. Somebody shows up every time and they say, I'm in charge. Y'all got to listen to everything I say. I mean, but I mean, I guess really and truly, there is a safeguard in there anyway because if someone starts doing that, then this board or whoever can always either correct them or send them down the road.
I would expect as long as I'm here, I'm going to be able to make that decision and, you know, step in and say, that's not how we want to operate. I would lay out that expectation upfront. So if we, you know, when we hire employees, we give them some basic expectations for how they're going to operate. So I want to make sure that they do what my expectations are first. And then, you know, the administrators and yours as well, I think I can effectively convey what yours and the administrators are. But if not, yes, I would expect you to correct me and correct the emergency services director if they weren't meeting your expectations.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Does anybody else have anything? Mr. Hankins, I just want to say thank you for the work that you and the Fire and Rescue Committee put into this. And you touched on earlier that we're not trying to do away with volunteers. Unfortunately, this is where we're at as a society. And I know that Chief Haywood and Mr. Kent are sitting back there and even Mr. Parnell, when he was involved in the rescue. It's become increasingly difficult every year that I've sat on this board to find dedicated volunteers to answer that call. And I've said before, if I need an ambulance or a fire truck, my house is all fire and I look up and I see Rodney Haywood, help me Rodney. And I live on the other end of the county. I don't care what name is on the side of that truck. I need personnel, water, and hope. That's my three basic needs right there.
You're very fortunate. In the district that you live in, you have a very high-quality fire department with great volunteer participation.
During the daytime, where other people struggle, but, you know, I think we have some absolutely amazing fire and rescue volunteers in Withfield County. Unfortunately, we do not have the numbers of personnel to deal with the number of call volume. Not for lack of trying, but unfortunately, AEP likes to get paid every month. Mortgages like to get paid and they have to have real jobs. But, you know, I've been around emergency services for several years and I think this board in the past several years have made major investments in our equipment and personnel. And a lot of citizens don't realize that. We've bought new fire trucks, new turnout gear, new equipment. And I, you know, as a former member of a volunteer fire department, I just want to say thank you to the rest of the board. You know, we've got top-notch equipment and I think this is just a natural next step into improving services to our services.
Yes, sir.
And, you know, we don't want to take over. We don't want to replace chiefs. It's just, unfortunately, in the past, we've had instances where the county has had to be the bad guy and step in. And that was always there in the Code of Virginia. You know, we're just putting in an ordinance. But...
If you don't mind me addressing that.
Go with me.
That is one of the things that this ordinance does. In the past, when you've had to revoke the authority of the fire In the past, when you've had to revoke the authority of a fire department to operate, you've basically blown up the department. It's the only way that you had to fix it, and that's not a commentary. That's just the way it was. In this case, if there's a chief that's not conducting business the way that is expected to, you have some authority to direct that chief, where you don't have that now. So, whether you approve that chief or not, you at least are able to lay out the expectations of the board as part of that process.
So, we now have a scalpel instead of a hand grenade.
That's a good analogy, right? But, you know, Rodney and Gus and Chuck, thank y'all for y'all's work on this. I mean, I know it's went back and forth for...
A year.
Yeah, two years.
We've worked for a while.
But...
I'll echo this, Mr. Chairman. As your acting chief, I've had the opportunity to roll out a lot of vehicle fires and a few house fires and several incidents that I ordinarily wouldn't have been able to respond to, working in the truck and some of the departments. It's been a pleasure to be able to reengage and, you know, get some of that muscle memory going on, what you do when you're on a fire scene, even if it's pulling hose or hooking to a hydrant or, you know, just setting up supply or even providing heels for an apartment that's been six or eight hours on a fire scene. It's been a good opportunity to get back and see what they're doing, and they do really do a fantastic job.
And I'm glad you mentioned that the acting chief, that's the one question I had from somebody, was the county fire chief. And I'm going to tell you how I explained it, and you tell me if I was wrong. We need that position on paper to apply for grants, different stuff, but, you know...
The way to look at it is, Dakota, Virginia specifically gives that person the title chief. When they are not on an operational scene, they will be your Director of Emergency Services. If they are unseen operationally, they can be called chief and should be called chief just, you know, so that it meets the NIMS and the NFPA standards. But the person who is in control of that scene is the chief of the department that is first to respond. So, I'm not going to roll up to Chief Haywood's scene and say, "I'm in charge." That's not going to happen. You know, don't ever want to see that unless it is that, you know, major disaster or county by emergency that would dictate that. But then operationally, it would be functioning as chief. When they are not on a fire ground, they would be your Director of Emergency Services.
And just to go further than that, according to our county disaster plan, if something happens, it falls on the Chairman of the Board of Supervisors. Lord help us. That man right back there, actually, those three men right back there are who I'm going to be asking for advice. I mean, that's the way now, but with that title, I'm sure if you'd like to help Chief Haywood serve fish or Gus serve barbecue chicken next time they have a fundraiser, I'm sure they have an apron for you. They'll sign you up after the meet.
They haven't asked yet? That might be more of a health department question.
All right. Does anybody else have anything? All right. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing, and I will entertain...
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if any of the fire department members wanted to address after we had that discussion, if I brought up any more questions that they might want to...
Feel free, because, I mean, honestly, it's, it has taken a long time, but we want to do it right. I mean, yeah.
Much needed and overdue, so.
And...
We appreciate, you know, the board's support as well as Mr. Hankins, you know, just with just the whole board's support. It's taken a village, so.
Rodney, you've been around as long as I have. You know how it used to be. And Gus has been around longer than both of us.
I don't like it.
Maybe put together.
Keep mouth shut, Jim.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve the coordinated fire and rescue system ordinance as amended.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Horry. Is there any more discussion or questions? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Burnett?
Aye.
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 So approved. Thank you again, Mr. Hankins and our fire and rescue people that were involved. Next item on our agenda is the payment of invoices. Each board member has received in their board package a copy of the invoices that need to be paid. I will entertain a motion to approve the invoices. Have a motion by Mr. Cook. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Smith. Is there any questions or any invoice that any board member would like to pull out? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Terry.
Aye.
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 So approved.
Mr. Chairman? If I could, you've got the... Yes, sir. There is an invoice that did not make the package that should have made the package, and we don't meet again until November 15th, and I would request if you all would approve payment to Main Street Builders in the amount of $149,884,14. Staff will process that check tomorrow.
All right. Have a motion by Mr. Cook. Do I have a second? Have a second by Mr. Smith. Any questions on that motion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Burnett?
Aye.
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 So approved. Next items and minutes of our previous meeting from October the 10th, 2023. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Have a motion by Mr. Smith. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Terry. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes as presented? All right. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So approved. We'll move on to old business. We have an updated Resolution 2023-33. Mr. Bear, I believe that is...
Yes. At the last board meeting, at the committee meeting two weeks ago, we had a, this resolution presented to the committee in this form, which was for the $2.164,667 million for the four chisel pedestrian connection with our 20% match of in 432,933. Unfortunately, what was in your package was the original draft ordinance last meeting that did not have these correct amounts in it, and I would ask for your all's approval of this resolution with the correct financial amounts in it. I referenced the $2.1 million in my discussion last time. I just did not recognize that it was not on the sheet.
All right. If I was a bit man, I believe I have a motion by Mr. Smith. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Terry. Is there any questions or discussion on that one? All right. Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Burnett?
Aye.
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 So approved. Anything else under old business, Mr. Bear?
No, sir.
All right. We'll move on to reports. We have the Treasurer, Ms. Gwynn.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Let me get situated here. I have all kinds of things for you tonight. We'll start with the financial report, because it'll be the simplest and less complex, so the discussion tonight. As of September month end, which would have been one quarter into fiscal year 2024, our consolidated account contained a balance of $71,539,666. Included in that is a general fund balance of $38,372,423. In comparison to this time last year, we are down a little bit, but we have a lot of school construction going on. We have county office building construction, a lot of big expenditure items that are going on right now over the last few months that have altered that, but my next items of discussion will send that in an opposite direction. But does anyone have any questions on the financial report at this point?
Does anybody have any questions?
Are you sure? Okay. Mr. Cook, it just looked like you may have had a question, so I just wanted to make sure. Okay, so moving on to taxes. The Munis system in the past year has made tax billing extremely fun. We've encountered many problems, continue to encounter many problems. We talk to the support folks on a daily basis. I think we'll all probably be exchanging Christmas cards before it's over. As far as personal property is concerned, last time I was here, a month ago, talked about kind of where we were at with issues and things that were going on. We've managed to get those worked through, but not because we didn't continue to have a lot of issues. We've, some things we've had to do on a manual basis that should be basically procedure of going in the system, telling it to run a few things, and it would automatically do what it needed to do. Some of those things aren't working correctly, so that's required some manual entry of data that would normally be an automatic process. So with that, that's caused, you know, a few little quirks here and there. However, we have finally managed to get through all of personal property. Was able to start pulling a bill file Friday afternoon. Before I left the office, I uploaded that file after reviewing it Saturday, checking on it Saturday to start the next process, coming in Sunday, reviewing the file. I uploaded it to our printer mailing service Sunday afternoon. So, personal property bills are now in the hands of the printers. I received a proof back late yesterday, actually right before 5:00. Finished reviewing it this morning due to other commitments that I had last night, so reviewed it this morning, approved it, and it is now in the print queue with the printers. So, with that, right now, the book total on personal property, we were billing out about $12.8 million after applying credits, prepayments, things of that nature, sending bills out right now for about $11.2 million to still be collected off of personal property. So, I do anticipate the bills to be received probably at the end of this week. At the latest, I would say probably Monday, no later than Tuesday is kind of the timeframe of where it's at with the printer service, but they always notify me as soon as they mail those bills out. They mail out a mountain area, so they get here fairly quickly. Based on that, I would like to see us, just to keep some uniformity about our due dates, consider leaving our personal property due date at December 5th. That'll give us about five, five and a half weeks from later this week, early part of next week, until the due date to get the bills, for citizens to get those bills paid. By code, we only have to send bills out 14 days before the due date. 14 days are not fair. I do try to get bills out at least by mid-October, however, Munis doesn't really allow for that as quickly as it did previously. That's, there's a lot of work that's now done in-house and not done strictly by the IT director to make sure that all the bills are, all the data is completed and the bills are sent out on both sides for the Commissioner and the Treasurer like pre-Munis. So, with that, that's my suggestion, my recommendation. You folks may have a different opinion and want to handle that differently, but I would like to see personal property at least stay at December 5th. But I'll move into real estate, and then we'll come back to that if you don't mind. With real estate, again, like the last time I was here, I don't even know where to begin with the issues that we're having, the problems that were to be corrected following the bill file last year or earlier this year, however you want to deem it, for the 2022 year, a lot of those things were not corrected. Commissioner started on those in June. They weren't corrected until September. She and I've worked to kind of go through the process as much as we can with Munis putting scripts in to fix things, to move them along. We were informed on Friday that because of discrepancies that we have, which on the Commissioner's tax books, our tax book for real estate exempt properties were not fully being picked up, and those are items that are required to be on that book for reporting purposes to the Commonwealth. On Friday, Munis informed us that they were going to have to reverse our entire process. At first, they told us they were going to have to reverse everything for real estate and personal property just to correct real estate. I will be honest, it was not pretty. I did blow my stack. Then they came back and said, "No, personal property's fine," because I was on the cusp of pulling the personal property file, so I was not happy. They came back and said, "No, personal property would not have to be touched, only real estate." So, we had to reverse back everything on real estate in one of the environments until Munis could figure out what the errors are, try to get everything fixed. So, they sent new files through yesterday. Commissioner and I have tested that out. We're still a little bit off. She has a lot of parcels that are still missing on the exempt side of parcels, so she's currently working with Munis to try to get those fixed. I don't know going forward where things stand with real estate, how quickly it will progress, if we can get back to working on it and get these problems resolved. So, with the fact that there's three weeks from tonight to the next board meeting and the unknown of where we will be, I would like to ask that you consider having an extension on real estate taxes beyond, of course, beyond the December 5th due date, simply because right now, even if things would get worked out over the next few days to a week, some of the problems we had with personal property on certain steps are also steps that have to be done in real estate, and those are things that they've had to refer to their development team, so that's going to require manual work. Real estate requires more manual entry on some of those things than what personal property did. Right now, I would not anticipate real estate, unfortunately, being out until at least mid-November, maybe even Thanksgiving. Around that timeframe is probably the earliest that I think real estate may go out, just based on how timing is that working out right now and what has to be done to get that file ready. So, with real estate, by that going out, possibly by Thanksgiving, and again, it's an unknown, I would, my recommendation is to consider moving the real estate due date to possibly January 31st. And the reason I'm saying the 31st is that would be month end, and that's just an easier date for folks to remember. It would allow possibly about two months to pay real estate, but it does separate those out, which is a discussion that we have been having. So, that's kind of where we are on both of those. Also, keep in mind, somewhere in this process, Mr. Bear's going to call me one day and say, "You need to move to the new office building," and we're going to start moving you tomorrow. So, we're going to have to get moved as well and be able to get back operational, so I anticipate maybe a couple of days of, maybe of a slowdown there, depending on, you know, how we can coordinate all of that. So, questions, opinions?
Does anybody have anything for Ms. Gwynn?
So, as, just to comment on the moving, the tax tickets will have to be done before we move. We can't delay this anymore.
Cannot delay tax tickets, no.
It can't be done.
No, no, tax bills will have to go out. I'm just looking at...
You move into a new building, they go in and...
I'm just looking at it in relation to a due date on moving, so they need to go out.
I guess my question, my question is, is do we have one point of contact that's working these issues, or is it a team? Or is it multiple people? Or we talk to them on the phone? Do we have them here?
A little bit of both. We have one lady that we're working with. She's part of a three-member team, her and there's another guy that we primarily deal with, but mostly we're talking to her, but if it's something she's unsure about, she does check with the other guy or guys that are in that department. So, there, there's things that they're collaborating on. As I mentioned earlier, when they told me that they were going to have to reverse all of the personal property work, I was not happy. I was not happy at all. And she told us, she said, "I'll have to confer to make sure," she said, "But that's my understanding is everything has to be reversed." So, she talked with the other guy, and he said, "No, we do not have to touch personal property," which I was relieved, because like I said, I was to the point of just being ready to start pulling that file as soon as everybody logged out the system Friday afternoon. So, we didn't have to touch that, only the real estate, and there's things there that's...
And I don't know that this lady's considered a dedicated individual just to us, but that she is who we are regularly communicating with between them and our IT staff. We're working directly with her, and that's good, because you're not just, you're not calling into a random person to pick up on everything. It's there, there is direct connection.
And that's my point. And that's my point. We need to get it escalated.
Yeah.
I mean, we can't, we can't do this again, the same thing that happened last year. We got to get these done.
I think a lot of things that, in the discussion that I've had with the other fellow, we upgraded in the spring to, from 11.3 to 2021.5. To correct the real estate issues for the Camer Bridge, for the, the data coming out of the, out of the Commissioner's office from Vision to Munus, there was a, a class code or type, Ms. Vault will have to correct me because we've done it so many times, we're now not sure where we're at. A class code or a type that was not on the bills. So Munus had to write a script to basically correct that, to push our file through. That is what was not corrected going into 2023. So in order to correct that, when our IT started working on that in September, it required an upgrade to 2021.10. In that upgrade to .10, we lost a few things. A few things that had been fixed before went away. So I've talked to the other guy that helps in, in support as well with Munus several times. And finally, one day, he didn't come out and completely tell me this, but pretty much about 90, 95% told me that because of our upgrade from 2021.5 to .10, which we were forced to have to do to correct the Camer Bridge, that's where we lost a lot of these things that we're having problems with now. They worked in .5. They don't work in the .10 version. So they're having to rebuild, re-script, whatever the, the computer lingo is to correct all of that.
So does he give you a timeline on when that'll be complete?
As far as these issues that we're having-
The corrections to be made?
Just as we're working through. We get through one part, you get ready to move to the next step and you just have to wait and see if there's another problem.
Where we are right now, Ms. Gwynn, just basically the tax exempt differential is the one item and then a little bit of a difference on your total value on the real estate base. Is that correct where we are right now?
The exempt parcels-
So, so with that information, how many, how many tax tickets out of the 20,000 people in, with county that pay taxes are incorrect?
That I don't know what is incorrect. On the tax book for the Commissioner's office that contains the data that is required to be sent to the Commonwealth of Virginia, there's parcels that are missing as far as the exempt parcels and that's reporting data that she has to have. So her book has to be correct. What my data pulls is based on her book. So exempt properties are not billing. Based on numbers we have right now, we're only like $5,000, $5,400 off on what the book total is compared to my AR total, but we're missing about 80 parcels that were assigned bill numbers that we're assuming are not showing up on the, you know, in the billing cycle to be billed. So that we're not sure about, but they have to fix the tax book to get those exempt properties so that that tax book is correct.
So we can't move forward without those 80 and just contact those owners and say, hey, yours is going to be delayed to get the majority out?
I don't know who the 80 are. I mean, I, I don't know from my side who those 80 are.
So we have to have those 80 to move forward?
That I don't know. It's fixing the Commissioner's book.
So Ms. Vault, we have to have those 80 to move forward so Ms. Gwynn can move forward on her end?
Okay, it started out being that no tax exempts were billed, I had one tax exempt. Today, we worked on that. We're missing 51. They're all in one category. There's category 77, which is charitable tax exempt. So we have identified them.
So, so I guess my question is, those 51 that you've identified, do, can we process without those 51 being in it and then process those 51 at a later date?
Well, the, the book doesn't match, I, I know it's tax exempt, but the book won't match the accounts receivable. And when you, when you get to that point, you can't go back and repeal something.
That's, okay, so that's answering my question.
You can't feel hard of it and then go back and do the rest.
Okay, so yeah, that's answering my question.
It, it, it's a slow process. I mean, it's like, you think you're going to find it really fast, but, but it ends up being slow. It's like today when, when we found where the, the ones were gone. She wanted a copy of the 2022 import file and a copy of the 2023 import file. So we found those, tried to email them to her and it comes back that the file's too big. So then we have to do a compressed file, email the, give the 22 and the 23 in a smaller file and email that to her. That also comes back that it hit the end. So then I have to call the IT department and ask him what we can do to get the files that she requested so she can look at it to see if it's in the file or if it's on the Tyler side. So in a day's time, even though I worked on it all day, that's all that I've done. I know that seems like not a lot, but it was a baby step. It, it's closer.
Stephen.
It just doesn't go as fast as you think it can.
Can we, can we ask Todd if they can get a shared drive or a cloud that they can upload this information to that we can share with-
But he, and he's been working with him on this, yes.
And I guess my next question there is, Ms. Gwynn, are you and Ms. Vault talking to the same person at Todd and Ms. Gwynn?
Yes, yes.
And Todd is too.
Sometimes we're all together talking to each other.
I think with what Ms. Vault's talking about, we need a, we need sometime a shared server that we can grant them access to help. And that would speed things up. Then you wouldn't have to be emailing these big files because that is an issue.
And we've had several what I call conference calls with them. Two o'clock in the afternoon seems to be their timeframe. So Friday and yesterday both actually Kathy, Todd and I were all in Kathy's office on a phone call with the support person. And even though it's on the Commissioner's side, I've been involved just so that I know where things are at coming over to our office. Because until that data is correct and released, I can't move on my side. But there's only one step that I can do and then it transfers back to the Commissioner's office for more work before it comes back to our office to finish out applying payments and actually bill out. So it, there's a lot of back and forth between the, between the two, but it's-
Mr. Bayer, I guess, I guess my question is, and, and, I mean, I, I don't think as, as the board that we have a problem extending the, the tax due date because it's the right thing to do for the citizens. But in, in your travels or, or Mr. Hankins, you know, Tyler, just a simple Google search, you know, Tyler's in a lot of localities. You know, the, the city of Harrisonburg has 51,400 and some people. They use Tyler. Are they having these problems?
Yes.
Ms., I'll let Ms. Gwynn answer because that's, I understand from her conversation with others.
May I?
Well, no, no offense, but, no offense, but you're an elected official and, I mean, are you hearing that?
Well, in, in my conversations with them-
Because for years, this was not a problem.
What the, that, when the upgrade happened from 2013, whatever we were on to the 21.5 that we had to go to, that brought up some of these issues that, that were out there that what was working for others before, you know, had some, some glitches are working now. Our, our throw into, our thing into Vision Camer Bridge last year created issues. Some of those still showed their head this year, but more of our problems this year have been related to, I think, Munus errors in some of their processing and what's going on. And my understanding is some of the other localities have been having similar issues. I do not know if they're looking extensions have got them resolved in the process.
Well, my request would be, and I don't know if you want to refer this back to the, the Budget Committee, but I would like somebody to do some work and provide us a report of who else is having problems and what we need to do to fix it. Because it's, you know, last year with reassessment, you know, that was one thing. But it seems like it's every year that, you know, we're, something's going on. If it's the system, then let's fix it. If it's a personnel issue, then let's fix it. But, you know, it, it's, it's very frustrating that more years than not that I've sat on this board, we've had to have this discussion. And that's my opinion. I, I mean, I don't know. I don't know where the blame lies, but it, it needs to go somewhere.
Mr. Chair, I will add, in talking to other localities that are on Munus, they were the same situation that we were. We were on 11.3. We were on an old version. It was working fine. Everybody was happy on it. Munus came out all of a sudden and said, okay, we're no longer going to support-
But the tax, the taxes were late under the old system before the reassessment.
Right.
So what was the excuse then?
I wouldn't call them late.
That's my question. That's, that's my question is, e- every year it's something.
I wouldn't call them late.
We had to extend the date. I can go back and pull the minutes.
Yes, sir, I'm aware.
You had to extend the date. So my question is, what do we need to do to quit doing this every year? So the people with county can expect those tax tickets like I used to get them on my birthday, which was my first or second year on the board. That has not happened in many years. Like I said, last year, the reassessment, it, it is what it is. But, you know, before the upgrade, we had this conversation. I just want to fix the problem.
Agreed. And, and last year was the first year we had to extend the date out for the due date.
No, we've done it before. I didn't think we had.
We've had others that we, the first year we had to extend out in 2017 and then in 2021, I think we had to move the due date.
So we moved to 15?
Like I said, more, more years than not that I've been on this board, we've had to do that. And for years, it never happened. And, and, you know, if it's this system, then, you know, let's have that discussion.
Understood. And, and it has been, I mean, it has obviously been both of the Commissioner and Treasurer's goal to, to, to have it out in time. Our IT staff has been working with them to have it out in time. We have been going through procedures of trying to do everything that can do to assist them to have it out in time. We'll pull together the information of, you know, we are not, we are not pleased with the problems they have caused with us on the upgrade that have cost us time this year, so.
Mr. Bayer, if I could add, I know Mr. Katrin just walked in and I know he's been working with Ms. Gwynn and Ms. Vault, but could we get a summary, well, where it'd be a weekly update, whether it comes from you or Mr. Katrin or whoever, on where we stand with this, this issue with Tyler? Because we need to, to get this resolved as quick as we can.
And going back, as I had started explaining, Munus required all users to upgrade from their 11.3 version to a newer version because they were no longer supporting the old version that we were on. So many localities across the board either have opted to not upgrade and just deal with not having the support from Munus because everything was working fine or they upgraded, they found bugs and they're almost experiencing the same things that we are, but they are having issues. Munus is not a tax-friendly person, or program, and I'm not saying that just because I'm the one that's using it, but it is not a tax-friendly program. It is a great financial program along all of that, but it is not a tax program. My frustration is we continue to keep adding other modules onto the system. I don't know how those modules are going to function either. I mean, it, it's just, you, you're going into it blindly and they keep overselling their product and keep selling and selling and selling. But it, it's not a tax-friendly program. There's a lot of localities that have Munus for everything except for taxes and taxes is on a different system, which I know goes against the original goal when the county purchased the system of having everything on a county-wide system, all aspects on one, one system. The previous systems that were used were in-house systems. IT Director pretty much did 100% of the work. And I know that for a fact because the very first year that I was here, he did most of everything to prepare the tax books and to create the tax bill for the Treasurer's office. The Munus system does require more work. It requires more hands-on work and you have to know the ins and outs of it. And I'm not making excuses of saying that's why the bills aren't coming out until mid-October or later. It's just the facts. That's just how it is. There's more steps than everything that we have to do. And when those steps are not working, as they are not working right now, it continues to cause delays.
How long have we had Munus, or, or the tax part?
The tax module went live in April of 2017. So 2017 was the first year that we build out on it and we were in late that year because there was so many things to get worked out because it was the first year.
But then we had a couple of years that it seemed to work right and then last year-
And it's always been slower and, and Ms. Vault had said from the very beginning that the, the timing of closing everything else was, was not as quick as what it was under Mr. Suther's old program and-
You have to realize though, we have worked a lot of problems out of it. I mean, I know it's not as fast as you all would like for it to be, but if there's not an upgrade next year, there really shouldn't be that many problems because we're working them out and the next person that comes in, it should go really smooth for them.
See, I don't, I don't think nobody up here is saying you're not working through problems. And it's not the seven of us that's getting impatient. It's the 29,000 citizens in the county. So, I mean, we're, we're having to answer questions in the public. So we, we want to make sure that we're equipping ourselves to be able to answer it intelligently and not just off the cuff. So that's what we're doing. We're not saying that y'all are not working through issues. We're just saying that if there's issues that's not being resolved, we need to escalate those. I mean, we can't just say, well, we'll get to it or wait for them to call us back. And I'm not saying you're doing that either, but we got to have somebody on the phone. That's the reason I ask if there's one point of contact. I mean, we're, again, we're going to hold up the tax tickets for the, the people in the county that's, 90% of the people in the county is looking for those tickets on that date because they're having to save their money to pay their taxes. Now we're going to say, we're going to extend it to January 31st. Well, that's through a kink in their plans and I don't like doing that. You know, we might be in a better shape than most people. We may not. I don't know, you know, people's financial status. But when people are budgeting and making decisions throughout the year, knowing that this tax ticket's going to be here on this date and then we fail, that's on us. And I don't like failing if it's in our control. If we've paid for a system that's not working, then we need to get somebody on the phone and make sure it is working or find a replacement system for it.
Absolutely.
I mean, that's, that's the bottom line for me.
I agree.
Yeah, why don't we pay for Munus, Mr. Bayer?
I'd have to go back and look at it. There's a large amount and we're paying a large annual fee with them as it is.
Exactly.
Well, with that large annual fee, I'd expect better support.
And I'll add, for what it's worth, we pester that girl to death. I mean, we do.
Well, it sounds like they get paid well for it, so don't feel bad.
I will agree. We, we do. If we don't hear from her, we're 4 million, we're 4 billion, we're, we're doing whatever. We do pester her.
I mean, you know, we, when I first, when I first got elected, we had one IT person. Now we have three. You know, we, we've done what's within our control, but, you know. Well, does anybody else have anything for Ms. Gwynn?
I had one other item unless there was anything, unless you all did want to talk about potential due date extensions. I do have one other item.
No, we'll talk about that when you get done, Ms. Gwynn.
Sure, okay. Recently, we, the, the Finance Department was notified by a vendor, by a accounts payable vendor that the county uses that they had not received payment for some of their invoices. So Finance had contacted us, contacted one of the, the folks in my office to inquire about some checks to see if they had cleared. When researching those, it was discovered that one check made payable to the vendor had been, I'm going to say stolen anyway, had been fraudently altered and the payee had been changed. The amount on the check was the same. Nothing else on the check was changed except for the payee. In researching, the second payment to the same vendor made on a different date, nothing was altered on the check except for the endorsement on the back was not to that vendor. It was just like a scribbly signature type thing on the back. just like a scribbly signature-type thing on the back. So with that, Mr. Hankins had contacted the State Police about the fraud on our account. I've put a hold on our bank account. So on a daily basis, I'm going to the bank and clearing all transactions that are coming into our bank account by the 11 o'clock deadline each day. We are monitoring that account. We have resubmitted payment to the vendor to pay them for the invoices that they, we had mailed checks for, they did not receive, but also for others. We've gotten that taken care of as far as a wire payment. What I'm looking at doing, have contacted Finance to have them to look into the accounts payable and payroll systems to see how easy they, or how easily they can change account information in there as far as our bank account. As soon as I can get answers on that and we can get all of that resolved, whether it's them being able to make that change or if it's requiring us to contact Munis to make that change, I will be closing out the current bank account that we have and reestablishing two new accounts. One will be our main account that all of our funds will be in. The other will be a sweep account. So we're, like I said, monitoring the account very closely, clearing items on a daily basis. But as soon as we can get all of that worked out, we will be making those banking changes. The bank did tell me that they've had another customer based out of another bank branch that also had checks going to Georgia as well. The checks that we had went to a Georgia address to a PO box. They've had another customer that had checks that went to a different PO box in Georgia, not the same town, but same state, that they have experienced fraud as well. So they're investigating it on their end, and I have not, they haven't gotten everything resolved yet there. They've gone back on the banks that cleared those checks, that those two deposits were made to, and they have not gotten a response back from those banks, that those banks are willing to fund them their money back. So I'm kind of at a standstill of what's going to happen all down the line back to us. But I did want to make you all aware of that. We are, like I said, monitoring the account, and as soon as we can get some things worked out on the AP payroll side, I will work with Finance Department, the schools, and Social Services to work on getting all of that changed so that we can change our banking information.
So is the bank covering that money, or are we covering that money?
Right now, they are. It really, honestly, Mr. Cook, the information they're giving me is it's going to be based upon what the other bank does. They've gone back against the other bank that had cleared those checks and trying to recoup their money. These checks were around $1,500 each, if I remember correctly. But they're trying to recoup their money from that bank. So depending upon what happens there will depend on what's going to happen beyond that. So I don't entirely have an answer on that at this point because they're still trying to recoup the money from their end. But again, just wanted to make you all aware of that issue that is going on. Have, we've been talking about implementing some other things with the bank. However, those things would not have prevented this from happening because the amounts and the check numbers were altered. So it would not have caught the one especially. And that's all that I have, sir.
All right. Does anybody else have anything for Ms. Gwynne? So do we need to take action to change the due date, Mr. Mayor, if that's our prerogative?
If that is your prerogative, you could wait till November 15th, but if they get all the problems resolved next week, then they'd have to send them out from November 5th date in the process. You know, if you want to go ahead and move the date out, and if they can get all the problems resolved within the next week, whatever, they'll send them out with that revised date. I'd rather not do like we had to do last year, go out and go out and go out. I think January 31st is probably a good recommendation that establishes it one time and gives ample time to get it fixed.
Are we going to do the December 5th for property and December 31st for real estate? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, real estate is what I was talking about. With personal property, those tickets been out and been received, hopefully in boxes by the end of this week.
So we don't need to take any action?
I don't think you need to take any action on personal property. They'll be in by December 5th, and then this will just split real estate.
I'll make that motion. All right. I have a motion by Mr. Cook to extend the real estate tax due date to January the 31st. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Horny. Is there any questions or any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
So approved. All right. Thank you, Ms. Gwynne. Next, we have Commissioner, Ms. Vault. Do you have anything?
Unless anybody has any questions, I don't have anything to add to all of that.
Does anybody have anything for Ms. Vault? All right. Thank you, ma'am. Sheriff Foster, you have anything? All right. We'll move on to new business. We have the consent calendar. Excuse me. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Horny. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Cook. Is there any questions or discussion on that one? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So approved. Next, we have our Gov. Deal auctions, and I don't know how she ever got this put on her plate, but Ms. Collins?
Yes, you've got the results of the vehicle auction. However, request approved.
Entertain a motion to approve. Do we need to declare the surplus?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Entertain a motion to declare the listed vehicles as surplus and accept the bids received on Gov. Deals. Have a motion by Mr. Smith.
Second.
Second by Mr. Terry. Is there any questions or discussion on that one? Ms. Collins, I will say, I read those descriptions, and you're the most honest used car salesperson, I will say. All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So approved. Thank you, Ms. Collins. We'll move on to staff report. We have Mr. Hankins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. I have three action items for your consideration. The first, we're asking for something we wouldn't normally ask for. We need a little flexibility in awarding a contract to a contractor for the Henley Mountain Radio Tower site. Problem is, we haven't received two of the bids we were expecting from specialty contractors, and November 15th is a long time to wait. So I would ask the board to authorize staff to enter into an agreement and give notice to proceed to a contractor on an emergency basis so that we can go ahead and get that tower complete, so we can get our radio system up and running around the first of the year. I know that's an unusual request to make, and then the attorney may want to opine as to the legality of that request. So I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have. As far as budget goes, you know, we think we're going to get really close to the budget number that we originally gave you, but the concrete volume increased by about three times its original estimate. So that's where the, any price difference will come from.
You got to carry that up there in a wheelbarrow, or?
We have been told by at least one of the local concrete suppliers that their trucks will get up there just fine. The property owners...
Can you let us know when that's going to happen? If not, can you video that?
I'll be out there. I'll take a look and let you know. There's a particularly steep section that I am worried about. We think there are some creative ways to help them get up there if we need to, but...
Back them up, because if they go forward, it'll run out.
Apparently, they have some front-wheel drive, or some, yeah, are basically backward concrete trucks that we can make that pull a little easier, so.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to authorize staff to proceed with the emergency procurement authorization. So moved. Have a motion by Mr. Horny, a second by Mr. Cook. Mr. Farthing, do you have anything to add?
No, Mr. Chairman, I do not. I think as long as the board operates staff to proceed with the best bid they get, then that's fine.
If we need to quantify the emergency part, I'm sure we can find people to testify. Does anybody else have any questions or comments on that one? All right. Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
All right. So approved.
Thank you. Second item, and you've got these in front of you. The second item is a memorandum of agreement between With County and Rural Retreat, the Town Council of Rural Retreat, which owns a lot of the assets that are operated by the Rural Retreat Rescue Squad. Some of you have been in on discussions as we formulated this document. This is the document that catches the most recent request by the Rural Retreat Town Council. It does not have everything in it that I wanted to have in, but the revenue piece of this is an important part of the overall emergency services operation. And now that you've approved the emergency services operation, it's time to consider whether to adopt this. The Town Council has it on their agenda tonight. Staff doesn't wholeheartedly recommend this, but it is the best option we've been able to come to. And without dragging it out any further, I recommend that you proceed with the agreement as presented to you tonight.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement as presented.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry. Do I have a second? Have a second by Mr. Cook. Is there any questions or discussion on that one? All right. Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Burnett?
Aye.
So approved.
Then the last action item relates to the lighting at the Apex Center. We had put out a bid for some lighting, some drainage, and some concrete improvements there at the building. This is, we rejected, or you rejected all those bids at our request. So we have looked at what can we do within the existing room that we have in the current contract, our current construction contract, to be able to get some of those improvements in. And the most critical ones are the drainage, the additional concrete pads that roll in and roll outdoors, and then the lighting and the conduit to go out to the light poles. This is probably a little more than I would like to pay, but you have in front of you a proposed change order from KNA, the contractor for the project. Their bid for, the work that's detailed in that is $222,690. We've had the engineer review it. We do think that there are some things in here that are a little high, but like I said, in the current bidding environment, it's difficult to say that's, you know, not going to be higher the next time it comes around. So staff reluctantly asks that you consider approving this proposed change order to allow us to get lighting there at the site and do the drainage so that we don't get water infiltration into the building as we've seen in the last couple of months, anytime it's rained. Be glad to answer any questions you may have. Just would add that we are currently renting light towers for that site, so that would go on, and just, you know, we've got to have some light for folks to be able to see as they're getting in and out of the hockey arena. So this would improve the overall site lighting. Once it gets done, the question is, is this, you know, something that you're willing to pay?
Were the temporary ones a no-go? We're talking about renting some. Is that not feasible?
We have four temporary ones there. You know, it's around $700 a month to rent each one of those. So, you know, it might be cost-effective for a year or two to do that, but, you know, I think you want to have something permanent there. The question is just how do we go about doing that?
And the drainage around the building and the drainage they're putting in gives us the ability to come back and put the pavement around the building like it does, and like you said, get that water away from the building. But it goes in, puts the drainage structures in, so when a paving comes in, you're not creating ponding areas up next to the buildings.
So do we have a timing on the paving?
Not yet.
It would be next spring. You know, I think that's the earliest I can recommend that you do it. You know, the paving, or the asphalt plants will be closing down, you know, before too much longer. You know, and they're generally closed through the winter. So I would expect that, you know, March or April would be the earliest that we would be able to do full paving there.
So the drainage piece, that will help with some of the runoff that's coming from the barn down?
From the barn down, the behind, but on the west end of the building, coming down through there, all of that, and then also on the east end of the building, as you go past where the pavement ends, there's a dip through there, and water stands through there, and water was standing through there this weekend. This puts in drainage pipes across through there to pick up all that water.
All right. Does anybody else have any more questions or discussion? I lost my paperwork. All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve. Is it a proposed change proposal?
Proposed change order for the drainage and concrete improvements.
All right. Entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
All right. I have a motion by Mr. Horny. Do I have a second? All right, folks. Roads paved with squirrels that couldn't make a decision. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Smith. Is there any questions or discussion on that one? All right. Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
No.
Aye.
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 So approved.
Thanks to be clear for Mr. Pauls.
All right, Mr. Hankins, anything else?
Since this is my time, I'll take advantage of being on YouTube and ask folks to seriously consider adopting a dog. Our shelter is full plus. We have more animals than we need to have down there, and we also have some in Foster. The With County Animal Shelter has done a really good job of promoting the dogs that are available. So go on Facebook, find With County Dog Shelter, and pick out a dog. You know, they've got a lot of good ones that need good homes, but most of our rescue agencies and our local shelters are at capacity. So just, you know, before you go shopping for a dog or trying to buy from a breeder, think about adopting from a local shelter because we need the help.
And I agree, and it's, I know we've had it on the radar for a while, but it seems like it's becoming increasingly...
Excuse me.
More frequent that our shelters full. So I know it's on the capital improvement plan, but, and I know Mr. Hankins and Mr. Bear, as you travel around the county, you picked out some potential sites, but it's getting to the point where it's a... Not a want, but a need, so. All right. Move on to County Administrator, Mr. Bear.
Oh, yes, sir. A couple of action items. First, DMV animal friendly license plates with the $510. Would request you all approve those funds, and we will provide those to the Withland, and authorize the transfer to the Withland Animal Welfare League for spay and neuter programs.
All right. Entertain a motion.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry. Do I have a second? Have a second by Mr. Cook. Any questions or discussion on that motion? All right. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So approved.
Second item is, earlier this year, you all adopted a With County Health Insurance retiree policy. As written up, that policy required a 90-day notice to request participation. VRS notification requirements are only 60 days. Would request that we revise this policy to require a 60-day notice to coincide with the VRS notification requirements.
All right. Entertain a motion to, excuse me, entertain a motion to approve the amendment.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry. Do I have a second?
Second. Second.
Have a second by Mr. Cook. Is there any questions or discussion on that one? All right, hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? So approved.
Mr. Chairman, the rest of the items I have there are informational items. Um, I, well, the other item that's not on there, and I thought Mr. Hankins would take some of his YouTube time to say as well, but, uh, I will, as everyone knows and, and most of you all were there, um, With County successfully installed a hockey rink and had its first hockey game last Friday and Saturday night. Um, uh, express appreciation to all of our staff, Mr. Hankins, uh, and, and staff, but particularly our Buildings and Grounds Department for all the work they have done. Landon and his crew did a tremendous amount of work, uh, finalizing everything out there and, uh, quite a bit of, of overtime to last a little bit to make sure everything was ready. Just express appreciation to them for the work that they have done.
Yeah, absolutely. They, they did do a good job and, um, never been to hockey game. I went Friday night and that's the reason I sound hoarse because, uh, apparently been around that cool ice.
Sure, what, all the yelling and screaming?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was going to.
I absolutely do not understand the rules, but the two things that I understand is it's very fast and it's very violent and I like both of those.
Absolutely.
And had I not got the crud, uh, I was going back Saturday because, like I said, don't have a clue what the rules are, but I'll learn, so.
Just, just for the record, I think, um, me and Chairman Vaught was the biggest two kids in the building. We were right up against the glass.
And I will tell you that, uh, with age comes wisdom because when they hit the puck over the net and as I was standing next to the, uh, the, the glass, at 47, I was covering my head and there were six kids trying to catch it. Mr. Smith did not offer any assistance.
I was covering my head.
Yes.
But I, it, it, I, I spent time just walking around, talking to people and everything, both nights and, and even for probably 20, 30 minutes after. And, uh, you know, very positive feedback. A lot of people excited. A lot of people had never been in the facility before and excited to see the possibilities, so, uh, it was a good weekend.
Lot, lot of excitement throughout the campaign.
A whole lot of excitement. And, and I've told everybody, I, I went to a concert to, uh, see Travis Tritt on Thursday in Salem. And the food that I got at the hockey game Friday night was better than the concessions at Salem on Thursday night, so.
I'll tack on to what Mr. Bear said. Um, as, as we walked around and talked to folks, uh, there were a lot of folks from out of town. There were folks there who were not going to come to With County for any other reason other than to come see that hockey game and they were spending money. They were staying overnight. They were eating before they got there. They were eating concessions once they were there. Uh, and, and that's really the, the intent of, you know, what we all wanted to see is, is, you know, that out of town money being spent here because, uh, that, that's really where we're going to see the benefit.
So I have, Chairman, is there anything else?
All right, county attorney, Mr. Farthing.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Uh, I do not have anything to report at this time.
Um, Mr. Farthing, on a side note, uh, have you got broadband at your house yet?
Not yet. Mr. Hankins told me that it might be the end of the year before I get it.
Did he say what year?
He did not, actually.
And honestly, the reason, the reason I asked, I noticed they'd been running it through the town of Withfield, so I just wondered if they were finished on.
I need to check the website again. I've not checked in a month or so, uh, to see if they got a harder date for me to, to look at.
Point broadband was expecting that cabinet to be turned on in December.
Okay.
Merry Christmas, Scott.
I hope it works.
Hey, my, my, Mr. Chairman, I thought in the church two weeks ago or last weekend, there was two people standing there and one of them, uh, was talking and there's something about getting broadband at their house and it was perfect because the person right beside them said, "They just turned mine on last week and it's the best thing I've gotten in a long time." So I'm like, "It's, it's there." They're like, "Oh yeah, the wires are there, it's just they haven't got it turned on in that area."
And I will say, I know they are sending out, um, mailers and they have somebody going door to door, so. All right, board reports, Water Committee.
I lost it.
One eleven G. You lost a long time ago, you know.
Well.
You want me to do it?
No, I finally got there. I hate, I hate these upgrades to the computers because then they moved everything and now I can't find what I need.
Yeah, if, if, if Tyler's anything like this, uh,
Yeah.
Adobe upgrade.
I agree. All right, uh, the Water Committee met on October 17th, 2023 and recommends the following. First is to obtain engineering services through our open-ended firms for the Silom, is that right?
Yes.
Shadow Lane Pump Station Project.
All right, come from the committee, it doesn't need a second. Is there any questions or discussion on that recommendation? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? So approved.
Second is to approve the change order number two for the Max Mez Collection System Improvement Project.
Right, any questions or discussion on that recommendation? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So approved.
Third is to solicit bids for preliminary engineering reports for the future Pepper's Ferry West and Whispering Pines projects.
Again, any questions or discussion on that recommendation? All right, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So approved.
And fourth is to write off and close the accounts on the attached delinquent accounts list.
All right, again, come from committee, it doesn't need a second. Any discussion on that recommendation? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So approved. Anything else from the Water Committee?
I believe that is it, sir.
All right, we'll move on to board, uh, member time. Mr. Burnett, we'll start with you on board member time.
I don't have nothing at this time, Chairman.
All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Cook? I have nothing at this time. Mr. Smith?
Couple of things, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Bear, we got an update on Whispering Pine Entrance, uh, Millers Creek Road and Connors Valley Road.
Whispering Pine Entrance, uh, the last of the email I sent you that they are looking at those recommendations I've offered for us to meet insight on that in the process. Uh, the Connors Valley Road, they do have some work compared on it, but I've not heard if it has started yet in the process on it.
Next, Chairman.
And you, I did share with everyone the information on Orion and, uh, Bentwood. Yeah, okay, thanks.
Uh, one other thing, Mr. Bear, if we could get this clock fixed right up here.
Okay.
It's off. Driving me crazy.
Need to get a battery.
And then, Mr. Chairman, last thing I got, uh, Tammy and I would like to thank the With County Sheriff's Department for their donation, um, to the scholarship foundations. So, um, we do appreciate that and we know that the, all the law enforcement didn't have to do that and anybody else that went over and, and done that, so that took us with surprise and we, we greatly appreciate that and we know Logan would, so thank y'all.
All right, thank you, Mr. Smith, Mr. Horny.
I have a couple of things. Uh, one is, I, I guess to Mr. Hankins, I had someone that talked to me that they've had damage done by point broadband and they have actually talked to point broadband, but they signed a letter saying they would pay to fix it and they still haven't, so is that something we need to contact somebody about or?
I'll, I'll send you the, the contact. Um, Mount Rogers PDC is the one administering this grant and so, uh, Chairman Vaught's request, they have set up a, uh, contact point for people to email, uh, reach out to so that they can deal with those issues. I'll, I'll email you. It's, it's, it's through Aaron Tysmore.
Okay.
Uh, he, he's the one coordinating it, so.
All right, I will appreciate that. And the second one, I have already talked to Stephen about this one and, uh, Sheriff Foster may, I'm sure knows about it. Uh, evidently out on Johnny Lane, there was someone sh- that's doing target practice after dark and they shot a, evidently a huge container of Tannerite and caused some problems, so I don't know if this is something that we need to work on as a noise ordinance or something, or if there's anything that can be done about it. Did you do it?
If I did, it was before 11 o'clock.
Well, that's the problem it wasn't.
Not because of the ordinance, it's because of when Mr. Cook's in bed by 11.
But I mean, I, I appreciate the sheriff and him looking into it and seeing what we can do or can't do about it. I mean, I'm sure he's already been contacted.
That is.
Uh, oh, the only other thing I was going, I wasn't going to use this as a political thing, but I was going to just say, in two weeks, everybody go vote. Don't, if you don't vote for me, vote for my opponent, but at least go vote.
Is that why you want it red, orange, black, trying to look like me tonight?
Oh, no.
I wasn't going to bring it up either, Jake.
Oh, help me.
All right, Mr. Terry?
Nothing at this time, sir.
Uh, Mr. Bear, I've just got one thing. Um, can we get VDOT to do a speed study in Crockett? I, I know we had, uh, some people come to the board meeting here a while back. I know Sheriff Foster's, um, put on a direct patrol. They've stopped some vehicles, um, but apparently they're seeing something different than, um, what the officers are seeing.
Twin Railroad tracks, eh?
Yes.
21.
With that, can you request that they shared the, the actual data with us? I know that, uh, Sheriff Foster did one and, and had the data, but just have VDOT share the data so we can see if maybe we're missing something. And that's all I have. All right, next item on the agenda is a res- or a closed session under 2.23711A1 Personnel Matters to discuss vacant positions. And are we still doing the second one?
Uh, yes, uh, I would like to do add county admin lead time and salary review, uh, on the personnel matters.
One and then 2.23711A5 to discuss a pers- prospective business or industry, Project Artemis.
Mr. Chairman, we also need to add a very brief A7 consultation with legal counsel.
All right, and A30, 2.23711A7 consultation with legal counsel.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Smith. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Terry. Any questions or discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now in closed session. We signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Can't help but some of the two board pages.
We're now back in open session and on the record. Mr. Terry, if you'll read the certification.
Yes, sir. Whereas With County Board of Supervisors, uh, excuse me, has convened a closed meeting on this day pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of, of Information Act. Whereas Section 2.2 dash 3712 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the With County Board of Supervisors and such a meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be resolved that the With County Board of Supervisors hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, all the public business matters are lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by the Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which a certification resolution applies. And only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convened in the closed meeting were heard, discussed and are considered by the With County Board of Supervisors. And, Mr. Chairman, I'll make that a motion, sir.
All right, have a motion by Mr. Terry. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Horny. Is there any questions or discussion on that? All right, hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Burnett?
Aye.
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 All right, so approved. Mr. Bear, anything else to come before the board?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hankins?
Yes, sir. Related to your earlier business, I would note I've received a text from, uh, the town manager of Rural Retreat. The, uh, Rural Retreat Town Council accepted the, um, agreement as well, uh, unanimously with, uh, or unanimous vote of those present, so.
All right, thank you.
We'll, we'll, we'll need signatures later this week.
I've already signed one.
Thank you.
I'm overachiever. Mr. Farthing?
I do not have any.
Ms. Collins? All right, hearing nothing, we'll be adjourned.